To four, all if they was here against the chairman of the Senate. Senator Senator.
We call the reconvening and setting the agenda for the second session. President Pro Tempore.
Distinguished colleagues, directors and staffers, balcony guests, members of the media, fellow Liberians, ladies and gentlemen. I'm extremely pleased to welcome you back to the second quarter, second session of the fifty-fifth legislature and hope that you have some wonderful and rewarding engagements with constituents across the country. May I also continuously thank you distinguished colleagues for the unity regardless of political affiliation, your support and cooperation, dedication to your committee work, regular engagements and consultations as a team which has helped to make this Senate stable and productive. Today, as we resume, I wish to present a summary report from January sixteen to March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. That includes the current state of the Senate's governance and financial management practices. Total legislation passed seventeen. Ratifications, one amendments, one. Inadmitts fifteen. Nominees received seventy-five. Nominees confirmed forty-seven. Legislation in committee rounds thirty-three. Detailed copies of this report and the journal for the second quarter session have been distributed to your offices for your record and to take note of the tasks ahead for all committees in the next few weeks. The status of our reform process, the General Audit Commission, GSC, recently conducted a second review to assess the ongoing implementation process of their recommendations. Below is an update on key areas where where the notable milestones are being achieved. Number one, the Senate Strategy Plan. The first draft of the plan has been produced, finally reviewed and approved by the Senate leadership. This plan is a vision as a cornerstone of all reform initiatives and serves as a critical foundation for institutional development. Two, finance. The Senate has renewed the contract with the financial consultant who has done a great job collaborating with the finance team in producing the twenty twenty-four annual financial reports. Additionally, draft policies and procedural manuals have been completed including documents on fixed assets, fuel distribution, fund disbursement and effective cash management. These drafts are currently pending review and approval by the Senate leadership. Three, information and communication technology. The Starlink internet system has been successfully integrated into the existing network infrastructure and Wi-Fi services are now stable within the Senate. The official correspondence email addresses for senators are relevant and relevant staff members are non-operational. The ICT consultant is available to set up their accounts on the devices of choice for senators and their designated staff members. Four, human resources. A bar metric time and attendance machine has been fully installed. The IT team, the HR office and the finance department are coordinating efforts to ensure that all staffers are enrolled in the system efficiently. Their bar mattress system will ensure the following: eliminates time fraud and payroll discrepancies, increases productivity and efficiency, data-driven decision-making strengthens workplace discipline. These actions put the Senate ahead of the government's plan to digital transformation according to the President's executive order number one forty-seven. Update on oversight responsibilities. Let me express my thanks and appreciation for the robust oversight role play in the last weeks of the first quarter of the second session. The actions taken made some great improvements in various sectors of government. Today, we continue this process by first getting a five-minute summary of committee's work from every head of a committee while we wait to get all written reports. Your reports will form a part of the next agenda for this session. Highlights on some outstanding matters. One, the Senate was concluded on the request to investigate the two-hundred-plus million dollars loan acquired by the governor of Liberia for the STABP and RETRAP projects in twenty twenty-one under the agriculture ministry from the World Bank. The loan included one-hundred-and-twenty-four point five million for roads that has not been done as well as over forty million loan to smallholders farmers for agriculture purchase that must be identified. We asked the agriculture committee to conduct a public hearing and report in one week. Two, a complete report from the committee on health on the effective and timely disbursement of funds by the Ministry of Finance to all referral hospitals, health centers and clinics by the Ministry of Finance and report on programs that need to be implemented to enhance quality care for our people in all counties for the national budget support. Phase two of this hearing will include JFK and redemption hospitals. Three, report from the education committee on the status of volunteer teachers inclusion on payroll, teachers' trainings and renovation of schools across the country. Four, we want to applaud the government for the progress made on road development and maintenance. However, the essence of the road funds is to benefit all counties. We do hereby mandate the committee on public works to review the plans for the next road project and ensure that each county get an annual allotment for our approval. Also, there have been complaints about violations of the Road Fund Act and we would like to launch an investigation into that to ensure the smooth implementation of the law for development progress. The Senate received invitation from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs for the chair and some members of the Committee on Foreign Affairs to join the delegation in New York to conclude on the final voting process for Liberia's representation on the United Nations Security Council. The La Bree Senate head of delegation of five at the launch of this campaign few months ago and we continue to give our fullest support to this bid and we look forward to a win. Today, we are pleased to announce that a winner for the Pro Tems committee at war goes to the chairman on concession, Chair Bar, to the committee on concession Chair Bar Senator Batikua. And the reward will be presented in the break room. This committee has done a fantastic work while on vacation with all ministries and agencies that are directly honor their oversight responsibility and will present some recommendations to the Senate on Thursday upon his return. The recommendations will provide insight on the actions that we must take for the effective management of the country's natural resources, especially in the extractive industries. The management of our natural resources was discussed at the Senate's retreat in our quest to increase the national revenue envelope for the economic growth and development of our countries. The presentation by the concession committee in few days might take the Senate to another retreat to get a final resolution on a roadmap as we have done with the Port Authority Bill for decentralization of government's operations for the development of all port counties. Lastly, let me announce that on Thursday, May sixteen, the Senate were inducted into office on Lukoka as the new senator of Nima County. The rules and other committee and R O A please take note and act accordingly. Distinguished colleagues, thanks for our wonderful session and we look forward to some great achievements during this session in the interest of our country. With that said, the second session will hereby open. So next on the agenda is committee summary report by each chairperson. So we we will start with the committee on executive. You can read for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem, distinguished colleagues, I'm happy to be back. And so are the members of the committee on the executive. Over the last segment of our session, the committee was able to deliver a read on the confirmation of those who were nominated lastly, which was also approved by this party. We are currently, as a committee, continuing our discussions with for the Minister of State and all the other ministers associated to discuss the plans for the completion of the executive mansion. We'll be holding public hearing as was requested by the Ministry of Finance so that the public is aware of what government has done with for the mansion in terms of renovation and what still has to be done. And we will officially communicate with you. But let me also use this occasion, Madam Pro Tem, to to thank the the minister for public works who over the break provided the people of Maryland County with a setup yellow equipment to do the streets in Harper. And of course, the representative of Plo was able to also use the equipment to do the streets in Plo. The last time the streets in Maryland were attended to in a form and manner that the machines did was before the war. And I am grateful to this government that we are getting the machines saying, you know, to work for the people. I'm hoping when the other set of equipment come will be able to do. Yeah, but there's the opportunity, there's the opportunity we have to. Are we going to have, are we going to have a lot of time? Yeah, but that's true. The machines were bought at last government, but you people didn't know what to do with them. So, yeah, but Madam Pro Tem, while we have a formal report to submit to this, but it's important that you touch the issue of our mineral resources in our country. Any opportunity we have expected from me, I'd like to mention that because we can have all the committee reports here. We can have all the oversight here. We can bring all the ministers here. If we do not look in the direction of getting what the government and this country deserves from our natural resources, the country is going nowhere. We can do all we want to do. In fact, the more the more different it appears, the more it appears that we are doing the same thing over and over. We cannot afford to not use this legislature with the kind of knowledge and experience we have to transform our country. More than ten years ago, or Pro Tem, we, more than ten years ago, we had the opportunity to discuss why you are talking about here. Transforming the resources so that it benefits the people. But I think it's a good time that we come up with policy, ask or let it slither and you need to drive that. If we do not do that, Pro Tem, our country will continue to be exploited. And as much as there's a need for for us to be robust, we need to have accountability, but you have eight hundred million dollars. It's eight hundred million dollars. Even you have all the accountability, it's not going to be more than that. And the country needs additional money to move forward. So I applaud you in your comment with me to do what we can do with our additional money. And we're talking about billions of dollars. The taxes cannot give us the money. The only place we get it from, that gold, diamond. Last year, according to report, we exported almost one billion dollar worth of gold from this country. Almost one billion dollar worth of gold, official. So you can imagine what is unofficial. Just on gold. Think about diamond, think about iron ore. And then we do not have a budget that reaches one billion dollars. So we have a fundamental problem, you know. And so, Madam Pro Tem, when the committee concludes this report officially, thank you very much.
The Chairperson of the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Madam President Pro Tempore of the Senate, distinguished colleagues, chamber staff, the media, our citizens and employees in the gallery. No. We give God a glory for our return to our second quarter in the second session of the fifty-fifth legislature. The Committee on Foreign Affairs was engaged from time to time with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and at times with the President himself on foreign-related matter. One of our primary concerns, Madam Pro Tem, during our break, was to engage with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs regarding the issue of conflict between India and Pakistan. Because we have Liberians in India and they call our attention as a government. And so we have been engaged. And we can report to the Senate on behalf of the committee and our dedicated members of the committee and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs through the minister has been engaged. In fact, yesterday, there was a Zoom call with Liberian students and Liberian resident in India with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, the Deputy Duette Gray and Assistant for Asian Afro Affairs, Charlene Taylor. And there were assurances that the Liberian government is chief of the matter. Liberians in India, from the interaction yesterday, were assured that the Liberian government would do everything to ensure that they can lend them to sixty just case. But we were also informed and told by these interactions that Liberians are safe where they are and thankfully the ceasefire between India and Pakistan showed the hostility is seasoned. Airports are opening, businesses are running. And so Liberians, especially the students, are doing okay. One of the key things the committee will insist on and ensure, Madam Pro Tem and distinguished colleagues, is to ensure that Liberia opens a diplomatic mission in India. India is a war power, economic power. We have more than four thousand Liberians in India. And there is no representation, no embassy in a part of the world to cater to our own diplomatic needs and the well-being of Liberians in that area. So we're going to ensure hopefully that something is done that we can get an embassy or a council representation this year in India. Madam Pro Tem, as you said, I will thank you for our engagement with the executives, the foreign ministry and the president of Liberia regarding Liberia's bid to the United Nations. For the non-permanent seat at the United Nations, with the approval, Senator James Barney and I will be traveling to New York next week for the voting processes, which will be on June third. We'll be closing the Liberians camping for their seat on May twenty-seventh in New York at the UN headquarters. And on June third, there will be vote. Senator Barney and I will join the Minister of Foreign Affairs and the Liberian government to return with victory for Liberia. Madam Pro Tem, permit me, a distinguished colleague, that the issue of our roles, electricity, water in most of our country, we are experiencing a bit stability of electricity. We don't have all of the roles, but there are massive role intervention and development groundhog in most of our country. Massive. I'm speaking as Senator of most of our country. Massive. And we must acknowledge this thing and not only look for the negative ones. Water and sewer is, water and sewer is also performing and we need to support these efforts. Thank you. Thank you. But even with the roles network, with a semblance of stability in electricity, with the mounting of quacks to supply waters through the pipes to roofs and businesses. Well, I interfere with the Senator's report. I think, I mean, you can see. Okay, that's okay. Madam Pro Tem, Madam Pro Tem, distinguished colleagues, as I take my seat, I want to remind us and reemphasize that with all of this role network, electricity, water, it will help to strengthen the economy and provide jobs for our people. Maybe all of these things will be private for nothing. And so during this sitting, the second quarter, I want to encourage my colleagues to please join us so that we can bring pressure to bear, constructive pressure to bear on the Minister of Labor regarding the issue of a work permit. If you give five eight thousand work permits to non-Liberians for jobs that Liberians are qualified for and available to do. Everyone one thousand for work permit per year and giving an accounting job to a non-Liberian that pays two, three thousand a month. Imagine a Liberian was employed, getting two, three thousand dollars as an accountant of technical places and receiving two, three thousand every month. What will happen to this economy? Imagine we have four thousand or five thousand of such jobs given to Liberians who are qualified, available and suitable. What will happen to our economy? And so I want to encourage us so that we make this a priority and so that it becomes successful. So that we can get the job for our people and then provide a job for them. Thank you and God bless you.
The Chairperson on the Committee on Digital Show Human Rights Prince and Practice.
Is there a chair, is there a chair, chair in here? No.
The Chairperson on the Committee on Waste, Means, Finance and the Budget. Thank you. Pro Tem, distinguished colleagues, I want to say thank you and thank God for providing the opportunities for us to be here. And I also want to thank the committee members for the love of work down thus far, especially the subcommittee on revenue and also the subcommittee on expenditure. As you may be aware, the budget has two sides. The revenue and the expenditure. So in our analysis, we always try to look at the revenue aspect first. Because without generally what you projected, it is difficult for you to execute the budget aligned with the different objectives. So in the first quarter of the twenty twenty-five budget, revenue was shut by ten billion as projected. Then in the second quarter, the two months have ended already, we have over performance of over ten billion. So it offset the the shortfall in the first quarter. So currently, as at the end, as at the end of April, revenue were projected to be two-hundred-and-sixty-eight million five hundred thousand. So at the end of April, the Revenue Authority has collected two-hundred-and-sixty-two million nine hundred thousand. So at the end of April, the shortfall got narrow by five point three billion dollars. So we can say this to the Liberian people that revenue is performing. We can say this, that giving all that are happening, we are still performing. On the expenditure side, we've noticed that expenditure is quite slow for the fact that the World Bank has suggested that the procurement system be automated so to have a platform that everyone will want to enter. And then the space is not provided enough for all the procuring entities to enter at a particular given point in time is creating a problem, Pro Tem. And we have to proper our communication here that will allow the PBCC and all relevant agencies to come because as you say, even bits that were put up for road work, new road works, they are not been able to conclude. Not that the money is not there, but the system is just so slow, so very slow that it's not aligning the procurement process to be a little fast. And a country like Liberia that has both rain and sun and taking a lot of time to procure on road contracts, I think is worrisome. So we want to be proffering a communication that will bring the stakeholders so that we'll find a way, if public works will be exclusively placed in a bracket. And you know, I think we as a government have to look at that. But on the other side, for payments of civil servant, recruitment of additional teachers is rolling out, nurses, they are all rolling out. And then the top-ups for those that were below the minimum wage and a certain gap that has been created, the top-up has taken effect. So at the level of the civil service, I think we are stable as a government. That's why sometimes some of the protests are not just working because when people get, when people working and get paid, and their pay seems to be increasing, sometimes when you're proposing something to them, they don't yield to that. That's why protests have been very difficult to succeed. I want to say thanks to all of us for ensuring that civil servants are getting paid on time and those that needed to have the top-up are getting it now. Our paramilitary people, all of them have been enrolled. So I want to say thanks, and I think the committee is monitoring. Thank you very much. The Chairperson on the Committee on Rules, Order and Administration. Madam Protem, distinguished colleagues, I want to thank God for his grace and mercy. They have brought us here, I want to be happy that we are back. Before I get to the Committee on Rules, Order and Administration, I just want to report that whilst we were on break, I did some follow-up, started with Maryland County, pertaining to the decision that was taken by Plenary that the Ministry of Finance and Development planning made payments to our health systems. I realized that few health centers in Maryland County, payments were made, but then the checks as the mandate elapsed. And so during that break, we were working with the Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Health to ensure that the checks were re-issued to our health system. And that was done, I want to say thanks to the Controller at the Ministry of Finance. We also work with the Internal Affairs as well as the Social Services in YSE to ensure that some of our employees who are not yet on payroll, get on payroll. And during my engagements with Internal Affairs and Civil Service, I realized that the problem seems to be huge. And so to enable us to do a thorough and holistic exercise, we think that the, I'll say that briefly on Internal Affairs, but we need some specialists from the county. So it will be good that senators gain contact with their superintendents so that we can talk to the superintendent of the ministry as well as the Civil Service to make sure that our people are on payroll. Now let me go to, let me go to Rules, Order and Administration. We want to, want to report to Plenary that we have now completed the replacement of all of our retired employees. We want to thank members of the committee, particularly I want to thank Senator Daba Akunkemakari, who was very, very instrumental, very, very helpful in the conduct of this exercise. Senator Daba, thank you so much. We also want to report that renovation works on the two buildings of the Liberian Senate are nearly completion. We just have few areas that are remaining. It is our projection that in the next two, at most three weeks, when within two weeks, we should be completed all works. Even in the old building, the chambers, the work at the, at the old chambers is almost completed. So that's the major work, and then we move on to the Office of the Secretary. We also want to report that Protem, we have completed all the competitive processes for the provision of healthcare insurance for our employees. But due to the fact that the amount in the Senate budget for insurance is not sufficient enough to cover the entire year, the coverage will commence at June 1, twenty twenty-five. But all procurement processes have been completed. For ROE, we'll announce that three months have been processed. Thank you.
The Committee on Defense, National Defense, Intelligence and Veteran Affairs.
Anyway, welcome to our, Madam Protem, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. I bring you warm regards and appreciation for the opportunity given us to present an overview of our legislative engagements and committee activities during the last segment of our second section of the fifty-fifth legislature. As Chairperson of the Senate Committee on National Security, Defense, Intelligence and Veteran Affairs, let me firstly appreciate my committee members for the cooperation thus far. This committee has got fifty members just as Ways, Means and Finance, and I tell you the relationship is monotonous among the members of the committee. During the period on a review, a couple of teams came to play. And please to inform this background added and the Liberian people that during the period, we were able to make some interventions. We were able to write the Plenary on patent rights. And I want to say thanks to the Committee of Comments that has begun hearings regarding our meeting. And the issue of patent has been a problem with our Liberian entrepreneurs. A lot of them has got no opportunity to input basic commodities. Well, Mr. President of the Senate, welcome. Thank you so much. And so in following of our presentation, we were talking about patent right, and we think this patent right, when it's looked at and analyzed, the Liberian businesses, especially small businesses, who have got opportunity to travel abroad to input commodities, will boost our economy and will empower Liberian businesses. And so we encourage the Committee of Comments to continue their engagement with the relevant agency to ensure that we have some resource regarding this committee or this communication that was ready. The next thing we want to talk about is a critical health sector oversight. During our engagement, we were able to detail our critical budget appropriation to the health sector with focus essentially on rule of communication, of communications. Our review for concern disparities in budget pattern as well as low-paced disbursement pattern to critical health institutions affecting their all-over operational effectiveness. This review, what we argued by the, by the Protem own wisdom, there was a public hearing, and that public hearing brought about a speed in the disbursement of funds to the health sector. Want to say thanks, Mr. Madam Protem, for your leadership. Whilst we were on break, the Protem received a communication from the FDA, which is the Forest Development Authority regarding the presence of broken abeys and all of foreigners, of foreign nationals in the part of Grandjea and Niba Counties. It is reported that these foreigners are involved with illegal farming activities, mining, pit sawing, in mostly protected areas in commercial construction sites. These illegal occupants are reportedly armed and wear of a knife. And so we have engaged with the Minister of Justice to investigate this matter through the police and joint security. If their report, if their report on this matter proves to be a situation of greater national risks, national security risks, we will be seeking the endorsement of the Plenary to mandate the enforcement of Liberia to take immediate seize of this matter in restoring the security and dignity of our sovereignty. On the other hand, we have been working with all of the security operatives, and they have ensured us that the country is safe and we all can go about doing our normal business. We also engaged the police regarding response to the various communities and counties. And they have assured us that procurement processes are on the way for fifty brand-new pickups, four by four, four-week pickups. And in the next coming weeks, those pickups will be assigned to every county in the country. So we want to say thanks to the leadership of the police as well. During the few days of our breaks, two letters of appointment was, was forwarded to our committee for confirmation process. And those letter came from the Martian, and one of them is the Position of Commissioner for, Commissioner Jarofel Liberian Immigration Service, the LIS, and Assistant Minister for Press and Public Affairs of the Ministry of National Defense. In the next few days, we will begin the confirmation process of those two nominees. Let me re-emphasize the issue of our vulnerability at the Liberian Senate. Colleagues, let me draw your, order your attention to the matter of internal security. During the last segment, we submitted a detailed proposal highlighting critical vulnerability within the Liberian legislature, especially the Senate. A proposed practical immediate intervention including CCTV system, institutional documentation, installation of CCTV cameras, and the improving of security protocols. Let me today be on record that I am again recommending in long terms an intervention that has to do with the installation of scanners at the very entrances to the Liberian Senate. To date, this proposal has received no consideration. I wish to state effectively clear that this is not just a security recommendation, it is a moral institutional obligation to safeguard every member of the Senate, each child and all those who enter this day. I trust that as we begin this session, our collective resolve was shaped from silent to swift actions. In conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, I wish to reaffirm a commitment to ensure that national security is not compromised but is still treated with the conscious seriousness and impartiality that it deserves. As we proceed with the second segment, I look forward to working with all of you in addressing the present challenges before us and building a safer, fairer and more prosperous Liberia. I thank you all.
Committee Chair on Public Works and Road Development.
Fellow in the Senate, hello, welcome, boys. Distinguished colleagues, our first quarter report is ready. You may run for signature, and it will be distributed either today or tomorrow. At the end of that report is an appendix that was supplied by the Ministry of Public Works, giving all the status of old roads, the ongoing roads, and the new one, the one that's that meant. So I send it us to look at that report because the only way we can verify that the progress that been reported by Public Works is from you. For example, during the break, I was on the road from Ganta to the southeast, and I saw progress on that road. And on the road from Pliwo to Bagwewe, I saw progress, but then again, I saw problems. And what Public Works reported for a contractor is not accurate. So we depend on you to look at our reports and the appendix in our report to make sure what Public Works is reporting that's actually on the ground. But generally, the road network, generally, generally there is progress. Most of the primary roads, that is roads that connect county capitals, most of them are lateral roads, but a lot of work has been done during the dry season. We must commend the Ministry of Public Works for that. The only issue is that the dry season, the roads are good. So we wait to see during the rainy season whether roads will still be good. Whether roads will still remain pliable. If they remain pliable, then we clap for the contractors. For the secondary roads, the road within the counties, they are still issues. Some of the roads are not pliable. So we look forward to getting the yellow machines, coordinating for yellow machines. And we know that when those yellow machines arrive, they will help the counties. We've been following the process, and we know for the yellow machines, we have understood and continue to understand that the procurement process is still on. I think the VP has followed that process. And one time he gave a report that at least the amount that was, says they have come to twenty-two million, and we understand it's still working hard so that mark can even fall below twenty-two million. And the procurement process is still on. The VP is here, he can talk for himself. We still have some issue with contractors, so we want senators to pay attention to the roads in their counties because one contractor in Gran Cru that should be, that has to respond for the road from Pliwo to Bagwewe is not doing well at all. We connect the Ministry of Public Works, the Ministry of Public Works to us that the man has done. The Ministry of Public Works told us that the man has done thirty percent of the work. But for the assessment by the people of Gran Cru, the county authorities, they have told us that man has done less than twenty percent. So the caucus therefore wrote in the National Road Fund, wrote the Ministry of Public Works, and we wrote the Ministry of Finance that no payment absolutely should be made to that contractor until there's thorough verification of the work that has been done. So we hope that senators will pay key attention to the report that we are submitting and the work that said is being done by the contractors. The permanent solution to our problem for road is pavement. Either through asphalt or through concrete. Reinhard Moseau Roads, Primary Roads Agos as I said, for the dry season, the, driving their goods, rainy season will be another story. The total length of roads in the coun- in the countries is about thirteen thousand kilometers. Of the thirteen thousand kilometers, only one thousand two hundred twelve have been paved. So the balance eleven thousand seven hundred eight km has not been paid. If you take a consolidated rate of six hundred thousand to seven hundred fifty thousand per kilometer to pave, we need about six to seven billion dollars to pave our roads. And we know that a budget alone cannot do that. So we are proposing, as we have always said, that we have to borrow. That's the only way to do it. We have to borrow and face our roads. When the roads are paved, that will enhance economic activity. We borrow, at the same time, we use our resources to do that pavement, but we need six to seven billion. I've also spoken to the management of the National Road Fund. The road fund envelope as it stands is very small. It cannot pave the roads. Uh, there are some leak, uh, some, there are some leakage in the whole system. For example, the road fund admin that, uh, according to the law, the assessments for the levy should be based on impulse. The amount of petroleum that is imported to the country, not the amount that has been listed by the, the importer. So this was different. But the road fund admin also that they are being perfected for posting their personnel at the P S D. Anytime when you put personnel at the P S D, at P R C P S D, they are presented, so they don't know, they can't, they can't verify that. So they are proposing some reforms to amend the acts, the National Road Fund act, to make it very explicit. So that, uh, for example, the money that is being collected cannot go to the consolidated account. But when it goes to the consolidated account, before it comes from there, it takes so long. So that a special extra account can be established and the funds for the road fund can go straight into the extra account. And to also make sure that they all have their personnel at the P S D. The Protem raised an issue concerning the appropriation, the allocation of road funds that all counties should benefit, that we should make sure that all counties should benefit. I recall in the fifty-fourth section of bill that was proposed by Senator Sherman, it called it an infrastructure bill. I think we debated the bill over and over. In that day, it was proposed that each county gets seventy amount per year from the road fund. I think we need to go for that bill, uh, Senator Secretary, probably bring it back to Plenary so that we can debate that bill and finalize it. Once it is there, uh, for example, I think the debate started when three counties will get this amount, the Smokey County will get this amount, and there was a lot of argument, and we didn't finalize that. So we'll look at it again so that, uh, we make sure we ensure it in your law that at the beginning of the year, each country will benefit with seventy amounts in the road fund. That will help, uh, solve that problem. Let me thank my committee members for the cooperation I received. And to the, to the Senate again, let me say that our report will be coming. Please pay attention to the annex for the Ministry of Public Works. It is through you who will know the progress that has been made. The contractor will know there are always problems with contractors. And it's the Ministry of Public Works that goes and does the assessment and give the certificate of completion. But if you look at it and the work is not done completely, you will let us know and we can raise that issue with the Ministry of Public Works. Thank you. Committee Chair on Health.
Mister Presiding, Madam Protem, members of the Committee on Health, my dear colleagues, I'd like to join others to say thank God that we are able to come back and prepare again to start doing the Liberian people work. The Committee on Health, as you know, is one of the largest committees. And understandably so, the health sector is one of the largest, I think, only third or two other sectors in the governance of the nation. During the period on the review, the committee worked along with the sector leaders, the Ministry of Health and other agencies within the sector. At the time, around about February, early February, the United States government fiercely suspended the USAID programs globally. The Senate as a whole was concerned about that, giving a huge support that USAID have provided over the years to several sectors, including the health sector. The committee, along with two, three other connected committees, was mandated to be the process of investigating and establishing the gravity of the cancellation of this funding. During that investigation, the committee realized that the withdrawal of the USAID funding has created a very deep shortfall in health programs in Liberia. Millions of dollars earlier committed to the health sector were canceled. We are working on the full report. We conducted several hearings. And the report will be submitted to the Office of the Protem. Under the government on Liberia funding through the national budget to want to appreciate the legislature, particularly the Senate and its leadership for the continual increment in the health budget. You will recall that in twenty twenty-four, we had eighty million plus, twenty twenty-five budget present ninety million, about ten billion increment. Want to say thank you for that. How be it during the budget implementation, it is no secret that there were huge challenges in dispersing these funds. We want to ice particularly the Budget and Finance Committee, working with those responsible for disbursement, that twenty twenty-five disbursement should be regular and timely. What that does is to increase service, timely service, service delivery, and also give us as oversight committee the opportunity for oversight. The committee also in an effort, because we all know that USAID funding was in committees that regulate to the government through the ministries and agencies. There are Liberian international NGOs that are also working within the sector that are funded by the USAID. So in order to fully understand the gravity of the issue, the Liberian international NGOs were also convened in a meeting, and they gave their share of, of the issue. The cancellation of the USAID funding does not only affect the healthcare delivery, but also have other social economic impacts, which are included in our report for your consideration. The committee also began a tour of facilities, medical facilities in the country. We started with the Joint Health Kennedy Hospital. And this was done by the Joint Committee from the lower house and the House of Senate. During our visit, we realized that the leadership at the Joint Health Kennedy is making effort, particularly to renovate the infrastructure, some of the floors, those of us who are going to JFK, we know that the floor now has a very good outlook, but it's limited, so they have come to the tail floor to, to create additional space, and that renovation work is ongoing. In response also to the increased maternal immuniter death, that's a functional and well-equipped rescue for newborn babies that come with problems and need to be looked at. How be it? The E R or emergency where they take us when we come with some health issues, abrupt health issue, needs a lot. During our visit, we realized that patients, over two dozens, were seated in plastic chairs. And some of them had drip on it, some of them had oxygen while sitting in a chair. We also toured where they do the dialysis. It's a very good setup, and that is working well. We should commend them for that. The kitchen needs improvement. The doctors there took us to the O R. JFK has about nine rooms that are supposed to be used as operation rooms. But only three are equipped and functional at the moment. In our discussion with them, they set the cost of equipping each of those room to be ready for surgery at eighty thousand dollars. This is something that we need to look at as a Senate, because most of the time people have emergency surgery and it cannot be attended to because the rooms are not available, even though we have the doctors there. We will continue these visits during the next quarter, during this quarter, rather. As you may be aware, as you are aware, the issue of medical malpractice came high last quarter. And in response to that, the committee immediately cited the L N D C to a meeting. And we had a discussion, they, they told us that the situation is actually grave even within Monsorado County, in Monrovia. But their challenge is that they cannot carry out regular inspection as should be because their budget cannot actually facilitate that. So we need to look in that, in that quickly. In response to that, I told them that if you have a budget, even to go the low hanging fruit is to go around Monrovia. Because issue coming out of Camden Hospital where they told us that the O R there, most of the equipment that were there to respond to that particular situation were outdated. That's something that they should have picked up readily, because that is not in the interior, that is not far. So they, they were mandated to go back and begin a robust monitoring of these health facilities firstly across the capital city of Monrovia and then extended to the other counties. We also have concern with the medical products that are, are on the market at the moment. So the committee cited the agency responsible for inspection and certificating the medical products and commodities. Their challenge also is that they do not have a functional and well-equipped laboratory. That needs to be looked into. If we as a country want to have quality healthcare delivery service, we have to have quality medical commodities and drugs on the market. And that can only be established through testing in an equipped and functional laboratory. Also, in April, the committee was invited to Turkey, Istanbul alongside the committee chair at the lower house to a forum of legislators across Africa and Asia to discuss domestic revenue mobilization to finance license. We'll be making a presentation to the Budget and Finance Committee, Office of the President Protem, to look into that. We are pleased to say that we will continue on the medical facilities tour across Liberia during this quarter. We'll also follow up on the fiscal budget implementation report for twenty twenty-four and request all detailed reports, I mean detailed allocation for twenty twenty-five fiscal budget. And there is one last thing I want to mention. The committee inherited the public health bill. We have been consulting in committee rooms. We have a plan to bring that back on the floor for discussion. Want to say thank you for the opportunity to the committee members and the leadership of the Senate for supporting the Health Committee. We are committed to continue working to ensure that the healthcare delivery system is improved. We want to congratulate Maryland County. Maryland County has worked exceedingly to reduce maternal mortality in that county. And so we'll be asking other C H O to work with Maryland. To work with Maryland to see what they did to reduce maternal mortality. Coming out of Grand Cape Mark County, I listened to one billion dollar worth of gold being exported out of Liberia. I believe ninety percent of more is coming from Grand Cape Mark County. We want to say here that our county's infrastructure development does not represent that information. And during this quarter, we'll be working, thank God, that the Protem recognized the Chair on Concession. And we're looking forward to the report so that we can act as a caucus to ensure that Grand Cape Mark County gets its just benefit. Thank you. My co-chair, thank you for the hard work and the entire committee members. Thank you, Mister Presiding, for the opportunity. Thank you.
The Committee Chair on Internal Affairs, Rapon Sidengen and Good Governors. As a President of the Senate, Madam Protem, as acting Chair, Co-Chair of the Committee on Internal Affairs, let me just say one or two things. Firstly, um, all of the processes, other requirements that were required for the implementation of the community projects have been submitted. And we have And we have subsequent briefings for plenary or we'll meet in a conservative session. We already reported that. There is a strong need to do some. Intervention on behalf of our local employees. A huge number of them that were. Pointed by the president have not yet got on payroll. So again, we want senators to gain contact with the superintendents. To give us some updates so that we can, the committee can help. Uh, we're not doing this only for our county, but we want to do it for all of the counties. But can do it effectively, we have the information that we need. But from our interaction with CSA. There's a huge backlog of. Our people who are still getting on payroll. Some of these things relate to. Asset declaration, our people are coming all the way from the interior. To come to Maryland to come declare assets. It's, it's a huge thing, we started the, 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 the discussions here, but. Pro temp, we did not get, uh, far with it, our people especially. Those of us from far away counties, two days ago, our call by a huge number of chiefs are in, in town. Uh, people from Maryland are in town, uh, to declare their assets, so. Yeah, these are some of the things that are delaying our payment, so we need to again engage that. Pro temp colleagues, one thing we want to also highlight again. Has to do with the issue of the governance commission. Governance commission is one of the agencies that we have oversight of. Um, you are aware that we took some decisions concerning. Agencies where tenure laws were bypassed. Uh, this is the second year of acting leadership at the governance commission. Pro temp honor your leadership, we brought this attention, this matter to the attention of the president, he promised to make some corrective actions. While to speak, the acting leadership of GC still remains. There are issues coming out of GC which demand our intervention, like yesterday. I received a delegation, went for petition. Uh, from about eighty eight employees of that institution. Who said they have been threatened, uh, with dismissal. Because they have been asked to reapply for the positions that they are occupying. And they needed the intervention of the committee. How do we do it when we took a position on that institution? So colleagues, we need to, pro temp, we need to, we need to make some actions, take some decisions. Uh, on the GC. But again, as we said, um. The committee on internal affairs is working. Um, all of the processes, we submit them, pro temp, we'll meet in committee in our regular consulting session. We have good briefings for plenary. Thank you, colleagues.
Committee chair on public accounts and audits. Committee chair on education and public administration.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, my grand senate, my important. Thank you very much. On behalf of the committee on education. Would like to stand our profound thanks to the leadership of the senate for your cooperation. As you're all aware, that this committee in conjunction with the committee on health. Had series of public hearing. I think it's two, maybe, maybe along with public where there were three committees. That this body really gave support in terms of having our hearing and the plenary section, so want to say thank you very much. Some of the issues, uh, that will be in our report, we'll get like a highlight and make a summary on it. Uh, pro temp read one of the issues that have become a major issue, the issue of volunteer teachers. When they're senate. Kid, uh, some office, uh, one of the major issues that was addressed in the presidents. Both presidents, the one I won, the one I lost, was the issue of volunteer teachers. Uh, and, and so they suddenly gave a major priority. And that issue has been discussed here. And it's still being discussed, uh, even during the vacation, uh, the ministry of education have said that they are trying to enroll. Initially, when the committee said they are not being enrolled most of the volunteer teachers on payroll, even though the government had missed some allocations. However, in recent weeks, we're being informed by the ministry that the issue of volunteer teachers to some extent. Is being addressed. The minister reported in one of our briefings. That at least two hundred teachers, volunteer teachers are to be enrolled in the, on the government payroll. However, we have received complaints. Uh, from teachers who claim to be volunteer teachers. Uh, somebody have even staged demonstrations and protests that they have been sidelined. Though the Ministry of Education have said they were able to. To, to collect information from public schools. Uh, it's beyond the information they are trying to enroll some of the teachers on the payroll. When in our full report, you will get, uh. You will, you will have the, 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 the actual report. Another issue. That have become a problem, it's just sorry. Uh, during the break, we saw the issue of students, especially public school students demonstrating from MCSS. And that demonstration caused some problem. Then we saw the issue of BDRYR institute where there was a goal slow. Then we saw the issue of the University of Liberia. Teachers claim that most of the children are not taking pay for one year, especially some of the part-time teachers. Have not been able to take over one year. Uh, so these are some of the constraints that needs to be addressed. We have meeting with some of the institutions. Uh, they met with government officials, the appropriate government entities for Eastern BDRYR when they had a goal slow. And there were almost shutdown of the institution. Uh, the government going to address, bring some of the teachers on the payroll. And we've been working with them to ensure that that happens. The issue of MCSS, uh, which took our concern. Uh, the student came on the street to demonstrate for inadequate facility, which is a major problem. The problem is not only for this government, I've been, uh, there's been a problem that has existed for some time on the issue of inadequate schools. If you go to some of the schools, I guess all the senators here are aware, in our respective counties. Uh. The facilities are not up to date. If you go to some of your counties, some of your schools. Uh, you find that students are sitting on. Better on anything, you know, so I don't want to say they're sitting on, uh, rotten chairs. There are no chairs in the schools, uh, so these are some of the major issues. That we are having. Another issue that we've been confronted with, uh, during the break. Is the issue of higher education. They complain that kind of is that we are just creating, and some of the schools are not even created by us, some of the higher education institutions are not created by us. But we'll continue to create higher educational institutions that the government cannot support. Whether it is necessary in fact. We keep getting all the senators saying everybody want, they want district college, they want community college. In your, in your counties and districts. And we don't even have the, the institutional capacity in terms of teachers. Or government support for some of these schools. The recommendation will be in the report. Recommendation be the report, some, some of the schools, some of the schools. Some of the schools are there on the paper, or people are saying giving voluntary allocation to some of the schools, we can't even find the schools. Yeah, one of, another problem, I, I guess majority of you are parents. And the Ministry of Education and ourselves, we have discussed this issue. Maybe the senate need to find a way to address it over and over. Public schools. The issue of schools adding additional fees. When you say you are having, say. No payment of schools, there will be no school fees. But when you say there are no school fees, there's teachers in the school far away to add additional fees. Sometimes the tuition fee alone is more than the school fees that go up. And that has become a serious issue. And the parents, they have complained over and over. I think for them, I've discussed that we are in private, and we have to find a way to remove the burden. From the parents. The, if the goal is to reduce the burden, because right now you, the, the country. The bigger employer now is the public sector, which is the government. The private sector is almost so small that we can't employ, so most of our parents are not working. And so when governments say don't pay school fees, then the school go find a way to increase additional fees. That put additional burden on the parent to become a serious issue, and the parent will tend to the government, because sometimes they don't see the people who are creating the, the problem. And bring the government, so it's something that we, we need to look at and address, but will be in the report. So upgrading facilities, I'd like to report that during the last administration. Through the World Bank. The government would establish three vocational schools. One in Bonk County. One in Dimak County. And one in Magidi. So among the three schools, two of the schools, my understanding from the Ministry of Education, two of the schools have been completed. The one in, the one in Nimba and the one in Bonk County. The one in Magidi did not meet the time schedule. But it's not been reported that the. Ministry of Education along with the World Bank have found a new contractor. So that school is our hope that will be completed this year, so at least we can find new facilities. For our public schools. My important distinguished member of the senate. As the government, as we pledge our support. To upgrading the capacity of our young people, especially when you say youth, youth capacity. One of the major tools we have to use is education, since we can't find jobs for people. And education has to be in two fold, one, we can't just look at the. The, 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 the. The normal school system, we've got to find a way to, to, to support vocational schools. Maybe support, more support to. To our vocational s- school system that are being created. And, and so we'd like to report on that, it will be on final report. But before I conclude, my important, uh, which I divided a little bit from, 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 from the committee on education. I'd like to thank you for including in your report. The, the issue of the, I'm a member also of that committee, of the, the issue on agriculture. My important. As a citizen of Liberia and as a member of the senate. If we have to improve the condition of our people. This government or any other government. We have to pay attention to how much money we are borrowing and for which purpose we are borrowing the money for. It is sad to note that. The governor of Liberia will borrow money in the two, of more than two hundred million dollar. To support smallholder farmers, since in fact agriculture is one of the pillar of our economy. And yet. We can't see anything, even the issue of, let's take one of the area, the issue of Kisawa. We are wish, according to them, money are being used, but even of Kisawa, there are no, there are no product area that we can boast of. Say Liberia is not generating something, or we have improved that sector. So I'm happy that you put in your report and you are in the senate, it's not only just, it's, it's not only just a report, because for all borrowings. We are, we continue to borrow money and we don't set a cap or we don't identify the problem for who we are borrowing the money for. We bring two hundred million dollars from twenty twenty one to the present. And you say you want to support agriculture and you can't even see one Kisawa farm in this country. And nobody can boast of how that Kisawa has transformed, that farm has transformed the sector and you have made money. So it, it's very important that we, that we, that we, that we investigate that. And the people can come and tell how much, um, who are receiving money. Because more than one hundred thousand Liberians benefited from that money. The report is, is there from the World Bank, you can go, if you want a card, I can share the card with you, so people can see it. This is very serious, this is not politic, this is not partisan politic, this is very serious. This is about the country, and that money will be paid for, will repay that money. My understanding, most of the money come with a twenty percent grant component, eighty percent is loan. When you ratify instruments for the purpose of special. Area or special facility, sometimes we don't even, we, we don't, we don't do more, more investigation to stop it. So as we assume this section, my important, I want to thank you for the leadership along with the president of the senate. For giving a clear direction that this senate would take. So that when we leave from here, we not be acting now there on behalf of our respective. Party, but on behalf of the people of Liberia who sent all year. To make sure that the right thing happened and money is spent wisely. And so that we not get paying debt. In that money, you, in that budget, you, you spoke about the issue of one hundred twenty four point five million dollar for road project. Part of that money somewhere went to. Somewhere went to the road between Tapita and Fishtown. Which is legislature, is fifty four ratified. So where is the hundred and, or close to hundred million dollars? Where, where has it gone? Those are money that have been approved, those are money that are already on your. Multilateral debt portfolio. And you have to repay it. So I want to ask the senate, say in fact, the complaint came from me, as a member of the committee on agriculture. And with your leadership and support by putting it in your speech today, that the senate will prioritize. That investigation, that the greatest attention will be given to that. That would be the beginning of reevaluating all new instrument that will come to the senate. So I thank you very much, and the full report on education will be seen in. Our official report we will present to the senate, thank you very much.
Committee Chair on Maritime. Mr. President of the Senate. Madame Protem, distinguished colleagues. I will be presenting to you a synopsis of what we are, will be reporting subsequently to the Liberia Senate. As our committee is concluding those reports. So let me begin with, uh. The performances of the Liberia Maritime Authority. And its judicial responsibility. I want to begin with the bureau in, uh, London. That is constantly pushing for the Maritime Authority to receive more seats in the International Maritime Authority. This is laudable because as we gain more traction in the international community, we have, we square our tentacles. And make more opportunities for our people. Today, we signed a bilateral agreement with the Chinese, the Chinese National Maritime Authority. That will create more opportunities in the future, including scholarships and more opportunity for jobs for our people. I also want to talk about the. The latest information regarding the establishment of a drop dock system in Liberia, let me explain that. So that system allows for the repairs and maintenance, rudimentary maintenance of ships. That falls on our authority. Liberia has the largest authority where it comes from fleets. But most of them are getting, uh, 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 repairs around us, Saraleo, Guinea, Ghana, and then Liberia. Because we don't have a drop dock. Negotiations are on the way for them to establish one in Nigeria, and as soon that's concluded. We'll have more opportunities opening for the Maritime Authority and people getting more jobs. Um, yeah, with that said, we'll be presenting our full report. And, uh, to the, the Liberia Senate and to, to, to the Protem, so that you understand exactly what's happening. But relationship between the committee and the authority is clear, and we'd like to thank them for their support, thank you. Committee Chair, I'll call my secretary and chair. Committee Chair, I'll call your teacher and father's chief.
Madame Protem. Thank you very much. And before I go to giving the committee report. Mister Vice President and President of the Liberia Senate. Please, on behalf of the people of Rivers. I stand here partly to inform the Liberia Senate. That since eighteen forty seven. Since Jesus Christ left from here, government electricity hit Rivers for the first time. Two days ago in the morning. By five thirty to six, some of my guys in Yapa Town, they called me, they were so excited. Thank you very much. We, 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 we are proud of this government. We are proud of this government. You can give any interpretation. You can give any interpretation, but. This has not happened to us before, in our lifetime. For them to start preparing the rule for punishment, even now compensating people who properties are fought, were fought illegally. In my lifetime, Mister Vice President and President of the Senate, please extend our gratitude. To the hair of the rescue mission, we have been rescued. Rescue Senator. Madame Protem. Madame Protem. While we were on the break. The European Union mission in Liberia infected the agriculture committees with other senators. Many from the southeast. They brought something to our attention that need the keen attention of the Liberia Senate. The EU mission in Liberia told us that. Cocoa from Liberia. Will be highly investigated and may not be accepted in European countries because. Any cocoa that will come from areas that have been deforested. Or forest cleared to plant cocoa will not be accepted in European nations. There is a serious issue and I will put it before the agriculture committee of the Senate. And we will be making full report, because. The issue of preservation. As a country, as a government. We must hold discussion with the European Union and the rest of the world to determine. The mineral potential of the Kudokko preserve areas before any area. Can be preserved in the country as protected forest. Because if we don't know the mineral potential of those areas and we just throw them out. Suppose a goal or damma deposit. And so if this area can be declared protected area, we must determine the mineral potential. Let the rest of the world or the people that will have interest in keeping that place protected. Let it pay for the value of the mineral on the tree. And so we'll be making a full report to the Senate. Um, while we were on the break, the, the president dedicated. A multi-million dollars portrait in the agriculture sector. About twenty six million dollars project. This particular investment will be producing two hundred thousand. Expert day. Which taking Liberia out of this other dependency system. Um. It has come to the concern of the agriculture committee. And the value of the investment, but we are conducting some investigation consultation before. We can make clear determination, because we are getting conflicting information whether. As to whether this investment is a new investment that need to be ratified. Or it was, um, investment that was ratified. We are just consulted and we have to get to the secretary of the Senate. Um. The committee on agriculture is looking up to the banking and currency committee of the Senate. To conclude on the proposed agriculture enterprise development bank. There's been will, the evil Liberian, Liberians to invest in the agriculture sector. And so we are anxiously waiting that. There is massive, massive improvement in lacra at the port. When we took over nearly my first visit at lacras, it was like a forgotten entity. Two weeks ago, I was invited there. To see the improvement with the board. And I can inform the Senate that the level of work that the management of lacra are doing. Is very, very encouraging and we want to commend them for that. Madame Protem and distinguished members of the Senate. The agriculture committee of the Senate is concerned. And we want to call for the review of the mineral or natural resource law of Liberia. There is a disparity that are cleaning the attention. As it is every government's portion of the social development fund. From the forestry sector is considered national benefit sharing. Because the argument is that not all the counties in the country are forested. And so money that coming from the forestry sector goes to national beneficiary. And all the counties in the country benefit. But. Not all the counties in the country are endowed with mineral, with, with, with money, I O. But the money that coming from the I O sector only benefiting the three big counties. Neymar, Bonk, and Gran Bassa. Yeah, the social development aspect, is what I'm saying. No, the river research. But equally so, the counties are benefiting from money from the forest sector that coming from Rivers. And so, we, we are calling for the review. If the government's portion of, of the social development fund from the forest sector can go into national beneficiary. Then the government portion from the I O, social development fund should benefit the whole country. I think it is quite unfair to the counties, especially the smaller counties. Yeah. And so. Madame Protem, distinguished colleagues, thanks for the attention. And Mister Vice President, thanks even for the rescue mission in Rivers.
Committee Chair on Gender, Women's Gender and Social Protection.
The President of the Senate. The Protem, distinguished colleagues. I want to take this time to tell you, thank you for taking me to the United States. And bringing me back safely. This is my first time. Oh, yes. Do not interrupt me. I want to bless God for that. It is an open door now for me. Through the rescue mission. Share on gender children and social protection. During the break of, almost to the break, we went to the United States. To discuss women matters. We got there, we had a fight session. We discussed about the war. After that, we had a storyline where we discussed the, the Republic of Saraleo and Liberia. We discussed about women matter, especially the gender parity. We are here and the report would be given to plenary, but now we're standing. Want to appeal. To the mail in the Senate. That this time around, we want gender equality. This is an act we bring forth and we want you people to look at it. During the break, we met, we. Do many people. We met with the Moroccan parliament, the youth parliament. We discussed about youth issues. I say parliament. We discussed youth issues.
Snow, and a snow queen for that to speak up.
That report will be added. I don't want to. Give reports with other recent, I mean, missions to the Protem. So all these reports will be, will be sent to plenary. Now. The issue of our county and laws that we have passed. Especially the rape law, the violence against women. Almost for the break. The history of normal that they who repeat, repeated itself. I was in Monrovia when I received call. From the chiefs and head of that I should go to the city of Boko. My question to them is why? They said when you come, you will know the reason I said. I want to know the reason before coming there. According to them, because of my refusal. They brought, they continued their outside again for me. There's a serious thing, the people are taking it to be joke, but it's a serious thing to my life, very serious. Lots of complaint to the minis, the minister of. Lots of complaint to the minister, the Minister of Internal Affairs. The Minister of France, Ababa is the chairman. I went to the Minister of Internal Affairs and they send the Minister of Culture. He got there, they seen night, they brought it, they were outside. So that's evidence. I am appealing to this body. So please take this serious. It is very serious to my life. Even there before yesterday, in Bako, the problem started. I will not dive deeply into it because. I will not dive deeply, deeply into into that. But the same problem continue. And as a female, Senator of that county, I need to be protected. I cannot be leaving my citizens. Then I honor directs. It's very serious. I want to appeal to everyone. Yeah, I've got all grown one. It's with the internal affairs, okay. Living there with the internal affairs, it's it's not only with the internal affairs. It is with my colleagues. Today, a senator can, tomorrow it can be Dabak and Senator Vanpu. Day after tomorrow, it can be the Protem. You people need to protect you. You people need to protect you, it's very serious. How we how we work as chair on gender. Then violation is always at my door. I don't have strength to work until I am protected. Thank you.
Committee on Concession and Investment. Committee on Post and Telecommunication.
As the president of the senate. Uh Protem, distinguished senators. On behalf of the Senate Committee on Telecommunication, we have a summary of our report on the telecommunications and postal sector of Liberia for the first ten sitting of the second section of the fifty fifth legislature. On the issue of financial performance, just a summary of twenty twenty four as reported by the National Communication Authority. The telecommunications sector remain a pillar of national revenue mobilization and digital transformation during the reporting period. So in twenty twenty four, we reported in the report that the sector, the sector itself generated up to hundred and ninety million in overseas data as a sector. And government share of revenue coming from that sector is nine point two million in that revenue that was transferred to the government consolidated account. In the terms of access and use of telecommunications services, there have been significant expansion in coverage and usage. According to the report, the mobile subscription reached about ninety three percent of the population. Mobile data user account for fifty one percent of the population. Network coverage, ninety eight percent of Liberia geographical terrain. Ninety eight percent of the geographical terrain, that is statistic. Farmer-up to infrastructure, more than one thousand three hundred kilometer of cable deploy nationwide. Regulatory deployment, development, sorry. To ensure transparency, innovation and consumer protection, the following regulations and framework were adopted by the sector. The value added services regulation, the national number resource regulation, the national number plan, consumer protection regulations, consumer complaint management system established and operational. For licenses and authorizations, the regulatory authority granted several key licenses to promote innovation and connectivity. Starlink will issue a one-year provisional licensing for satellite broadband. Orange and C square will grant a cross-border authorization. Five G spectrum was allocated for both private enterprises and mobile network operators. Thought counts for major initiatives, the sector played a key role in human capacity development. We're told that jointly with the measure of youth and support in that measure education, the sector will able to train ten thousand youth in fifteen counties. Supported in digital skill through nation, through a national program. For regional integration and cooperation, there's progress, progress in regional connectivity and affordability. There have been a free roaming agreement signed with Saraleo and the Gambia to lower regional communication costs. On cybersecurity, the sector is taking step towards a secure digital space including hosting of a national cybersecurity conference, development of cybersecurity regulations in alignment with global best practices. There have been cross border frequency coordination. For example, we're told in the December report that Liberia and Saraleo finalize a cross border frequency coordination exercise, enhancing spectral efficiency and mitigating interference along national borders. On government collaboration, there are key interagency partnerships are being established. An MOU with the Central Bank of Liberia between the LTA and the Central Bank to strengthen digital financial services. There also an MOU between the LTA and the National Identification Registry for fast-tracking national ID card enrollment. There also an MOU between the LTA and Legis for integrating telecom indicators in population survey. It's very important because in terms of property valuation, uh access to communication is also a factor to property values. Support for the Ministry of Education IRAS, the IRAS project, the provider connectivity, the ARAS provider connectivity to one hundred fifty six schools in the country. They also facilitated a high-level investment mission to Liberia by Nigeria Interbank Settlement System, the N R B S S. On the postal sector development, the La Guerre Postal Service is regaining national reach. There's an expansion of the National Property Identification System in Mostrado County. There's a plan to reopen and establish new postal offices in Southeast Maryland, for example, River G County. Infrastructure expansion in the sector, mobile operators are increasing their investment in infrastructure. Orange and Lone Star C R N T A are deploying new tariffs nationwide, especially in underserved and remote areas. Follow-up performance review. Following the achievement noted above, the Senate Committee on Telecommunication conducted an internal performance review and identify key screen and areas for continued oversight. The key screen in the sector, effective interagency and regional coordination. Improve sector transparency through regulation, infrastructure expansion, especially in rural area. Show digital skill training and youth empowerment skills. The areas needing further attention in the sector. The gap in actual internet quality and affordability in rural zone. Limited impact of postal services in Southeastern and River, I mean sorry, Southeastern and Ever River region. Enforcement on consumer protection and compliance resolution remain uneven. The need for follow-through on cybersecurity implementation, working with the security committee and aware they need to be done. We have a roadmap for the next three months on our oversight and monitoring. We conduct joint sector performance hearing with the LTA and major operators. Assess implementation of the consumer compliance management system. Monitor enforcement on new adapted regulation, especially cybersecurity and consumer protection. Major engagement, review the legislation on universal access form to expand rural connectivity. Review and recommend amendment to the postal app to modernize its frameworks. Assess readiness for five G rollout and propose supporting legal framework. For regional international engagement, we want to propose a facilitation of an equal level agreement on digital roaming and cybersecurity. There's a snow is here. Support labor representation at the International Teleuh Telecommunication Union and Smart Africa Event. Digital inclusion and youth empowerment. Monitor the ongoing impact of youth digital skill program. Advocate for the expansion of the IRAS and senior digital learning program to additional schools. For the postal sector revitalization, we will conduct staff visit on the national postal identification system expansion area and plan new postal offices. And recommend budgetary and majestic support for the rural postal operation. Madame, the president of the senate, Madam Protem, distinguished senator. The Committee on Telecommunication reaffirm its commitment to ensuring a well-regulated, inclusive and forward-looking telecom and postal sector. We look forward to stronger partnership with the private sector, regulator and regional institutions and Liberian public in this spending. Uh just to get in, Madam Protem, uh during the break, uh we had engagement on behalf of the people of River G County and Liberia uh with the Delaware Senate. Uh they've asked us to extend, you know, the gratitude to our female. Uh the Delaware Senate has a female, Senator Protemper, uh by name of Colleen Gay. And she extended her regards to you and hoping to visit abroad someday, maybe in this year December. We're also privileged to be honored by the escape of Delaware through the profit of the governor, Governor Mark Myers. As we are moving forward for this year, we are hoping indeed to launch our project to ensure that every town in River G County has a boarding pool. Well, thank you very much.
Committee Chair on Labor.
Distinguished senators. Not really. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues and committee members. The first week of our Easter break. Here in the Mostrado area, we visited, oversight visit in Kip Mount, Bumi and Biko. Um and in Kip Mount. Um from a health level, we visited Kenjo. Kenjo, according to the company, has a clinic. We visited a clinic and this was not a clinic. According to my experience, medical background, it's not a clinic, it's a health post. Kenjo has uh roughly about what, thirty thousand? People living in Kenjo and the surroundings and it has a health post. So we recommended that there should be a clinic, even if not a health center. Uh that was one of the recommendations. We went to the rec- the water reservoir. The water reservoir um is distributing six thousand gallons of water. For thirty thousand people in Kenjo, six thousand gallons of water. Um it's not sufficient. So we asked the company to erect additional um reservoir probably towards the the other side of the Kenjo community. Um. And then I went to the EPA retreat in Pekana. And the issue of mercury continued to come up. EPA has some responsibility to ensure that the health of this country is improved. Um but both Lancer Mines and EPA don't seem to have the solution. Even though Lancer Mines says they don't give uh permit to do um um river mining, but they are also indicating to us that they don't have the means of removing people from the river. In the meantime, the people that are in the river that are mining, they are using mercury to mine. My recommendation to um EPA and Lancer Mines. We probably don't need much money to get the people off the rivers. This process, the decision should start from the executive branch of government. When the president called on the Ministry of Defense, the police and intelligence and say and immigration and tell them, remove the people from the rivers. Our revenue income from river mining um is miniscule. It's it's down to zero. So we should not um prioritize the people that are in the rivers, most of whom are not paying taxes. To continue to contaminate the rivers while we eat fishes from there and then we also drink the water. Um let me remind you that um the river that we are drinking from in Monro- in Monrovia is also contaminated. So we are asking the president to make that decision. Lancer Mines, immigration, police, AFL, paraman chiefs and clan chiefs and commissioners in the towns and villages, tell the people to get out of the river. That's all it's gonna take. It looks like we have not arrived at that point in the meantime, uh these rivers are contaminated. Then I went to Grand Jida and visited Euro Locking Company. Euro Locking Company is one of the um major locking companies in the country. It currently has two hundred and forty-six employees and all of them do not have contract sheets. And so they don't have a personnel manager, they have no personnel policy, um people are just working. And so um we send them a letter to ensure that and that their employees are now also paying social security. So we send a communication to make sure that they rectify all of these uh um problems. In the month of February, we call for reconciliation between the um citizens of Codivoir that are rezari along Cavala River along with us on the other side of Cavala River in Liberia. And I also invited the senator from La Codivoir. Um there were a total of five hundred and fifty citizens from Codivoir that came to this reconciliation program. The senator from Codivoir came with a fifty-man delegation approved by the governor of Codivoir to come to this reconciliation program. They came with town chiefs, paraman chiefs, representative from the prime minister's office, somebody representative from NSA, from defense. Um there were fifteen-man delegation to echo us. And we discussed security issue at the border. Informing the Codivoir government that we have five million people and they are twenty-five million. Codivoir is twenty-five million, we are five million. We don't have interest in attacking Codivoir. And if we were to, we don't speak French to even be able to take a job in La Cote d'Ivoire. So we wanna make sure that we have a proper reconciliatory program. Between La Cote d'Ivoire and Liberia. Um. And we asked that we should do, um, this ferry between Cote d'Ivoire and Liberia at the Cavala River to ensure. The cross border crossing. Um, there was a reciprocal invitation. Extended to me and the representative from the District Number Two. To go to Cote d'Ivoire August seventh, which is the Independence Day of La Cote d'Ivoire. Um. Three days ago, I was in Kunabu District representing my dynamic chair on health. Along with a representative, Dr. Cooper from the Ministry of Health. To dedicate a new clinic. In Kunabu District that is about three, four hours motorbike ride from the last car road. And this clinic was dedicated. Uh, I also visited the health center in Kunabu District. This health center at some point in time needs to be declared as a hospital. Because, uh, in our opinion, this hos, this health center is bigger than. Uh, Israel Madatotna Hospital in Israel. So we'd like to see it been, um, uh, improved to the level of a hospital. Um. The issue of Bokina Base in Grand Jidda County. There are probably over ten thousand Bokina Base in Grand Jidda County. And we have been asking. The immigration. The NSA. Um, to enumerate these people. Go to them in the communities, let's find out who they are, their, their full names, what country they come from. Um, and they have been in the county for the past five years. So to come up and say, uh, the Bokina Base. Have problems. The problem is not from the Bokina Base. The problems are from the people that brought the Bokina Base into Liberia. The Bokina Base, according to them, they are here, they want to farm. If the security feel that the Bokina Base are here to endanger the life and security of our people. We wanna see that documentation. We wanna see that, I haven't seen the evidence. That Bokina Base are armed and they wanna harm people. The conflict that is occurring in the county is not from the Bokina Base. They don't speak English, they don't understand English. The conflict is from the people who brought the Bokina Base. They took their own forest and they gave it to the Bokina Base without understanding. The future problems. They are giving the forest to the people, they are giving the land to the people. And this is a communal forest, it's a communal land, it has no deed.
Stand up one minute, please. So we'll take, uh, the Senator of the last speaker, then we'll continue our talk, alright? Continue, Sandra.
Thank you. And so. So we've been going. For the past two weeks. I have been visiting every town, every count, every village. Investigating crisis. Investigating crisis that have to do with Bokina Base and the land. We have asked immigration to go to those places and enumerate these people. The Bokina Base have complained. That the immigration will go there and collect Dimi Fran, Dimi Fran, Dimi Fran for insurance and cancer. So. I don't want immigration to come here and they say Bokina Base are a problem. They have been collecting money from these people and they refuse to do their job. We don't know what these people are here for, yet they say they came to farm. But why would ten thousand people come to one county to come and farm? Isn't that an issue? That is an issue. So why go to them to collect, uh, uh, Dimi Fran and then you come and sit down? So when you collect ten thousand, uh, Dimi Fran from ten, from six thousand people, you know how much money that is? You put our life in danger as well. So. You come here and you wanna report to your bosses, report to your bosses. And let me say this, let me say this. The security in this country here. They took a lot of security courses, they take security courses to protect the citizens of this country. Y'all listen to me, y'all was, y'all. When, when problem come, you have to run away. Sandra, yeah, let me end, let me, and I will soon be finishing. I, I will soon be finishing. Sandra, I was, I was soon be finishing, uh, just give me, give me a few minutes, I will soon be finishing. Uh, the issue of Bokina Base is a serious problem in this country. Uh, the Chair on Security said Nima County and Grand Jidda. I'm sure that Grand Jidda has more, uh, Bokina Base than Nima. Uh, but it's been more than five years. As a security sector, why have you been waiting for to do your analysis? That you will come here and say, if you have got problem, where is the evidence? You went to security school and you took all kind of courses. Checkpoint, checkpoint is not security alone in this country. You are erecting checkpoint all over the, or then you say you monitor, you monitoring Bokina Base. You know, so. Let's talk to these people, what are they here for? Use your security analysis to, to interview and to find out what these people are here for. You don't start putting checkpoint around here and stand and, and impeding the movement of the citizens of this country. So, um, Mr. President. I, I want to finish this. There, there are, there are, there are more than six thousand Liberians. In a, in a go camp called Patetje and there is no police officer. We have a central prison of the Republic of Liberia that is one kilometer away from Swedu. When the government free all of these criminals, some of these criminals from prison, they come to Swedu. If they can't find place to go, they go to go camps. And when they get to go camp, the only way they can survive is to commit crime. And there's nobody there to monitor these people. When I say six thousand. I mean, all of the tribes in Liberia are in this go camps. When you go to C V R, there are about ten thousand. There is no police station. So we wanna ask the government, gonna ask the police. To make sure that they are listen to three police officers. In these go camps to help our security, to provide security, thank you very much.